For the invocation, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to introduce my friend, the Reverend Richard Rounds of Love Abiding Church of God in Christ, to give our invocation this evening.
May God bless you, may the blessings of God be with all of you. May the hand of God bless with you in your positions. I'm just going to read a couple of scriptures real quick, then I'll pray. There's something the Lord put on my heart. I will love the award, my strength. The Lord is my rock, my fortress, and my deliverer, my God, and my strength in whom I will trust, my buckler and the horn of my salvation, and my high tower. I will call upon Him who is worthy to be praised, so shall I be saved from my enemies. Father heaven, as we pray on this day, another day that You calls us to behold and to see. May Your hand of God bless with us as we pray on this day, every council member, the mayor. Oh God, look on all of them as they move here and there in the city of Topeka. May You rain down upon them the wisdom and understanding where they'll be able to solve and deal with issues and answers in the city of Topeka, Kansas. God, we need You more than ever, Round, not only here, but around our world. We need You more than ever. So what as we pray, we lift our hand to You, we give You glory, and we give You praise. Blessed now, as they move forward like never before, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the name of the Holy Ghost, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Daley Isla was not able to be here this evening, so I am Deputy Mayor Clear, and I will be presiding over the meeting. And there are no proclamations, and we have two presentations. Mr. City Manager, if you want to introduce.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, we have Chief Cochran will make a presentation regarding our strengthening police and community partnerships program. We went through a process here in the community to address some concerns regarding establishing better relations between the community and the police department. And from that, we got involved with the Department of Justice in this program, and we're excited that they've been meeting, and the chief's here to provide us an update on the things that they've been working on and what their plans are for the future. Chief?
Deputy Mayor, City Manager, Governing Body, thank you for this opportunity. What I wanted to do is give you kind of a brief back as to where we have been and where we're headed with the SPCP, strengthening police and community policing. So this program was designed with public safety in mind through problem solving and police and community partnerships. And what it does, it's to focus and increase the capacity within the city of Topeka, was our focus, of course, and that partnership to develop those solutions to solve local problems. And the way the program was delivered, it facilitated community and law enforcement partnership, builds that capacity to problem solve and resolve the conflict, and then improve public and officer safety. And so everyone desires a safe community. The SPCP principles, structure to be constructive, civil dialogue among partners within the community, positive police community contacts lead to trust partnerships and ultimately increase public and officer safety. And that's one of the things that I've always preached, that if the public is safer, then my officers are safer, and we have a safer community. And so that's where the SPCP really kind of pulls in together. So in February of 18, we first started getting together, talking with Department of Justice and what the SPCP would look like and how we bring that to the city of Topeka. And then on June 8th, we actually kicked off the event. We're the second city in the United States to do this type of program. Department of Justice sent in a lot of people from all across the United States to help facilitate this. We had over 100 participants involved in that whole program. Since that June 8th meeting, or conference, shall we say, that lasted all day, we've had six meetings where we've talked about the things that were discussed. February 12th of 2019, today, is to give you a brief back as to where we've gone, and then talk about 2019 and 2020. Five of the topics that were really identified on that June 8th date were these five, and you should have received an email from me today. Sorry that it came so late, but it talked about the topics, as well as the format in which we're going to roll forward. And so 2019, the city council brief back, which we're doing tonight, the district council brief backs, and I'll be getting in touch with individual district council members to talk about facilitating that within your district. This basically is similar type brief back with people that'd be representative on the council, on the SPCP council, from the districts. And then in 2020, we talked about the status meeting, and then we're going to have more of a summit, just like we had June 8th, but it'll be toned down a little bit, and it'll be in the four territory zones, or four police zones within the city of Topeka, and one, two, three, and four, and that'll include a lot of different council districts, 10 members, and so. Then we'll have a brief back at the end of 2020 and talk to City Manager and the mayor as to is there a need to keep this going, and where do we go from there? So with that, is Ed here? There he is. What I'd like to do is I'd like to bring up Ed Colazo. Ed Colazo was kind of the mediator facilitator for the breakout session, or the meetings that we've had since June 8th. So, Ed?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. So as we developed the SEPC program, and we continue going forward with our group sessions, if you look at the packet that you received, you'll know that originally we had a lot of tasks that were identified by the June 8th meeting regarding of things that, suggestions from the group that had to be discussed. As we went through there, we noted that a lot of those were more a sense of educating the public, if you will, more so than implementing that. Those are things that Chief Cochran and the city leadership had already implemented into the program. So we went through those one by one methodically, and we worked through them as we developed those, things that were identified that weren't in place. Chief Cochran was very diligent about making sure that something was put in place. Some of the things that the group came up with that were, they found extremely beneficial and that they were grateful for was the creation of Officer Lister's position. Officer Lister is acting in a liaison, if you will, with victims of crime, and letting know what the status of those cases are, and they found that to be very, very helpful in communicating with any victims of crimes here in the city of Topeka. Innovative, I'm sorry, increased cultural competency training and the inclusion of implicit bias training in the academy. So Sergeant Salamaka over the academy and his team have been doing a lot of cultural competency training, developing that program, and making sure that every officer goes through that program and understands the different biases and different things that we all carry with us every day. Innovative connections to bring more diversity to the force. So the recruiting team from TPD has gone out a lot to brainstorm and develop how to reach more minorities and be more inclusive, whether it be at Haskell University, or whether it be African Americans in different aspects of the community to bring them into law enforcement to represent more of what our community is. The creation of a civilian position in the professional standards office that will report to the city manager. So as we looked at the things that have, some of the difficulties, if you will, that TPD has had in the past, we thought, okay, how can we be more transparent? How can we be more clear, more concise with the public, where there's more trust and more transparency? So one of the things was this civilian position that along with the officers that are on their PSU unit would investigate and any officer-involved complaints or any use of force type things, and then this position will report directly to the city manager. Topeka, Kansas, being the second city in the U.S. to utilize this model. So the SPC model was a model that Erie, Pennsylvania, was the first city in the entire nation to do it, and we were right behind them, and we did it. And I believe Molly and somebody else went over to Erie, Pennsylvania, to see what they did, and then they came back and they shared that knowledge, and we were able to develop our program right there. But it was very innovative with the new leadership that came in into the city at the beginning of last year, to, actually, beginning of this year, no, I'm sorry, 2018, to build that and recognize that issue and jump right on it and develop that right away. Engaging in open and honest conversations around TPD's efforts and shortcomings specific to bias-based policing, that was one of the things that the groups thought that was very genuine and embraced by the chief and his staff. Hearing the chief and Major Clump say they want and need honest feedback, and their expectations is to receive it from the council. Working with people that are different and not the usual white affluent males. The GPS system of dispatch, that's something new that's come online in the last couple of months, where instead of dispatching a call to a unit, dispatcher has the ability to see where the units are based on the GPS, and they could send a unit that is very near to where the scene of the crime or the call is. An example that Chief Cochran gave was that there was a robbery in progress, and when they looked at the GPS, the dispatcher was able to know that there was literally a unit right across the street from the Quick Shop, and they were able to intercept and make an arrest right there on the spot. And the traveling council that will be open to the public in each district. So as the chief was indicating earlier, from here, the next level of evolution of this SPCP program is to take it to each district, starting with Councilwoman Hiller's district in District 1 in February. Is it this month or next? It's this month, right? Yeah. To have a group meeting there in her district, and it's going to develop through all the districts, all the way through District 9. At this juncture, Chief, this is a good time to introduce the folks that are here. If you want to stand up and introduce yourselves that were in the SPCC meeting, please. These are the folks that worked with us diligently ever since we created the group and were there through the snows and the storms and everything else.
Major Russ Clump with the Police Department.
Ashley Zepin, First Agregational Church.
Christina Russell, Polio Behavioral Healthcare.
Michelle McCormick, YDA ECA, Center for Safety and Empowerment.
Gretchen Kanan, TPD.
Kenneth McCoore, Canada National Guard.
Mr. Arden, please.
Thank you for being here.
So just in wrapping up, there's been a lot of progress that's been made, there's been a lot of inroads and successes, so there's a lot more to go. You guys have the calendar for 2019 and 2020, so if you look that over, it kind of outlines that where we're going to go in the future. I do want to thank Molly. Molly was very instrumental in the very beginning of this, making this happen. She did go to Erie, Pennsylvania with Rita from the Department of Justice to see how that worked, brought it back here. It was very instrumental in getting our steering committee put together. And I'd like to also thank Major Russ Clump from the Police Department. He's one that's facilitated this on a day-in and day-out basis. Like I said, there's a lot of time and effort that went in, and I can't thank the citizens enough that volunteered to be on the SPCP council. They were elected from the group of over 100 on June 8th. They were elected by their peers, from people within the community, which kind of gives that credence into the credibility as to where we're at and where we've come, that the citizens of Topeka elected a body that works directly with the Topeka Police Department and the city of Topeka. So exciting stuff, and we look forward to the next two years. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for the chief? Yes, Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. It's good to see some new faces. It's great to see some new faces. Time after time, I've been up here 15 years, we see the same old people, so I look for new ideals, but it's just very refreshing to see new people.
And that's a credit to the citizens of Topeka.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Neil, thank you. City Manager, second presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, Director Finder will go through the Development and Growth Management Report. That's our 2018 annual report, so it will wrap up the year. Phil?
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Governing Body, Deputy Mayor. I'm pleased to present the 2018 Annual Development and Growth Management Report produced by the Planning and Development Department. What you'll see here is a little bit of a couple of different things. In some instances, you'll see we came back down to earth a little bit. In some sectors, in other sectors, we're still stable and strong. So a little bit of a mixed year, but the trends are definitely going in the right direction. So building permit-wise, we will, we can see here that we did one less permit last year than we did in 2017, so very consistent. And that's a little bit under our five-year average, but again, same level of permit activity, building permit activity. But when you go to the, and start looking at the different types of building permits, say, under residential, our housing unit permit side of things did much stronger than it did in 2017, an 11% increase from our previous total. So we approved 122 units last year in the city, which is also an increase over our five-year average. So that, part of it showed strong, an even stronger showing was our residential additions and alterations. This went up 24% from 2017. We issued 193 permits for those types of, for that type of work. That is also an uptick over our five-year average. So what we're seeing trend-wise nationally is you have a lot more people staying in place. You have our mobility moving from residence to residence nationally is at an all-time low since World War II. So you have a lot of investment within the existing homes, and that's kind of playing out here in what we're seeing in these trends. We also did, are increasing our share of housing units within the county since 2017. We increased that 8% over 2017. So basically, of all the units that were approved in Shawnee County, housing units that were approved, half of them occurred in the city and half occurred outside the city. That is, again, showing us a uptick from the previous five-year average in last year, which actually was 2017. So again, stronger showing in that. And then we also inform you about our, sort of our lot inventory within the city. We only came, again, we look at our prime vacant lots, what we call our billable prime vacant lots, which are platted lots since 1970 that have streets or have building, sorry, benefit districts. So we only draw down, drew down, two months' worth of lot inventory this year, or last year. Again, we don't have a lot of new construction necessarily, per se, going on. We have a lot of lot inventory, but we also don't have a lot of listed inventory locally. By the end of last year, there was two months' worth of home listings for sale. When you look at the national average, that was about half of the national average. A balanced market would be about six months. So again, localities are trending with much tighter markets for homes for sale and lots for, and for new construction for sale as well. All right, flipping over to the commercial side of things, this is where we kind of came back down to earth a little bit in 2017 and the past couple of previous years, very high volume, particularly in the value, as you'll see here in a second. But last year, commercial permit-wise, we did 17% less total commercial permits than we did in 17. That's actually not that far off of our five-year average. We just had a really good 17 and 16. And when you look a little deeper into that, this shows the square footage, I'll skip that a little bit and go to the value, because it shows basically the same thing. The value for commer, actually, this is for all of our permits, but the lion's share of the value comes from commercial. So we decreased 33% in 2018 over 2017. That's a 23% drop in the five-year average. We had historic highs in the values that we showed in commercial permits in the last few years, the highest since we had since the recession. So there was a little bit of coming back down to earth, as I said. This is our lowest value in five years, but certainly not a low value by any means. So that, on the commercial side of things, again, you're seeing a little less activity last year, but you're also not seeing the top of the pyramid, if you will, the larger projects, and you'll see that here in a second. That's what we didn't catch last year as much. Okay, I get asked a lot about the permits that are issued. We show you the building permits. All these numbers are based on building permits. The map, the interactive map I showed you last time online, those are building permits. Those only represent less than 10% of the total permits that my department issues during the year. We've got over 5,000 permits that are issued. Many people don't know that. You have things, all the trade permits, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, you have excavating, you have digging, you've got right-of-way work, you've got fences and signs and things of that nature that aren't considered building permits. So when you look at the totality, we want to kind of look, okay, we have some numbers here, how is the rest of it performing? You can see that our total permit volume is actually up from 2017, and right, is right in line with our five-year average. So again, things are, there is a lot of activity, normal activity, I guess you could say, out there. There's not a huge drop, it's just, as you'll see here in a second, some of the bigger projects didn't happen last year, that happened the year before. So jump into our top 10 from 2018. I'll just, one thing I'll just note while we're sitting on this slide, is we have one project that was actually above the $5 million mark, that was the Brewster Place Cultural Arts Building. In 2017, the year before, we had seven above $5 million. So that's what I mean, there was a big difference in that top echelon of projects that we did not experience. But to run through the, just the top five there, just to refresh your memory, again, this is a 10.1 million Brewster Place. This is the place we're all going to go to here in a couple of years, with the exercise pool and the full-service spa and the two-story greenhouse and, I forget what else they had. So that is, that is coming along, not finished yet. Number two was the Wheatfield Village Development. We permitted the first two buildings in that development last year that will house the Johnny's, the Skim Pizza, PTs, and there'll be a third tenant there. So all the site work that went in that, that was just under $5 million. The Bishop Professional Development Center, USD 501, that, 31st and Arnold, that's 4.4 million. Really cool, exciting project that opened up over the winter here, 101 Kansas Avenue Lofts with 33 lofts and heated and conditioned parking. That came in at a 4.2 million clip. And then the fifth one, Go Scots Highland Park Central Elementary, the gym and storm shelter addition, that is just finishing up now, that's the backside of it at 25th and Indiana, that was a 3.2 million. So the, some other notable ones that we had in top 10 were the, I think you've seen them, McDonald's at 21st and Bell, East Topeka Learning Center, and Grace Med was the other, was the other big one of note. So as I mentioned, the big difference between last year and the, and previous year, again, we kind of carved off some of that, those upper echelon, those top valued projects from our overall aggregate. And so I was, and as we go into 2019, kind of expecting the same sort of status quo, not doing anything huge, not decreasing, that's just kind of the way that the market is playing out. But in just looking real quickly at what we did in January, it gives, we came a little hot in January, it gives us a little bit of hope that 19 will be different in a good way. We had at least, we had 25% of our total units, housing units, in 2018, we had 25% of that number approved in January for 2019. So we're way ahead of the unit creation. I know there are others in the pipeline, so we're excited at that. And then I also saw that we had two, two commercial projects, private projects, come in at values that would have been the second and third highest in last year's ranking. So we're starting out hot. I don't mean to get any expectations up, but we'll be back here in a couple of months to see how that plays out and keep you posted. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, we will now proceed to the agenda and start with the roll call.
Deputy Mayor Clear.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
How's that?
Mays.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Liston.
Here.
Okay, there are no additions or additions to the agenda, and there is two executive sessions planned. Okay, we will proceed now to the consent agenda. Clerk, can you read the agenda?
Items 3A through 3E are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event for the Country and Food Truck Festival, Rock and Food Truck Festival, Jazz and Food Truck Festival, Sunshine Reggae Roots Festival, and the Cruisin' the Capital 2019 Car Show. Items 3F through 3J are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting the Greater Topeka Partnership and the Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of the City of Topeka Code, Section 945150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. K, our minutes of the regular meeting at February 5, 2019, and there are no applications.
Okay, that's the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Jensen moves, and Councilmember Padilla seconds. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, vote no.
Mr. Emerson.
I think it says voted on here. I'll vote again, though, early and often, I. Yeah, it's not letting me.
Just so in suspense, I vote a yes.
Okay. Yeah, let me clear the board and try again.
Don't mess it up.
Okay. Is it lending you?
Uh huh. It's showing voting. Now everything went blank.
Okay, so we have nine yes.
That'd be correct.
Okay, nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. We will now proceed to the action items, beginning with the action 4A. If the clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, providing notice of a public hearing concerning the establishment of a tax increment financing district within the city, Sherwood Crossing Villa West Pursuit to K. 121770 at seek as amended.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, Governing Body, we have a request to set a public hearing date. Since it's been a while since we've talked about TIFF, I've asked Governor to move forward with a presentation that will cover some TIFF items and also some of the specifics to this particular request that we have today. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Manager Giver.
Mr. Trout, Deputy Mayor, thank you. What we have in front of us at its very core, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that what we're, what we're actually asking you to take action on tonight, and that is to set a public hearing date for March 19th, to consider the details of this district. So this is a very routine item. That being said, I'm very excited about this.
that what we're actually asking you to take action on tonight, and that is to set a public hearing date for March 19th, to consider the details of this district. So this is a very routine item. That being said, I'm very excited about this because I think we're here tonight kicking off what I hope is going to be a number of projects that are going to come in front of you. We've certainly taken, excuse me, we've taken the comments that we've heard from the governing body and the community about trying to have a culture of yes, and to be developer-friendly, and to try to work with developers. And so in the last couple of months, last probably five months, I bet we've been talking with six developers about TIFs, CIDs, other kinds of projects. So that alone to me is very exciting, kind of picking up on what Mr. Finney was saying, that folks are interested in us. For a long time, we've wanted to emulate what the metro area does with constant projects, and certainly in the metro area, those constant projects are asked to provide constant incentives. And so it is a constant push-pull and tug-of-war as to what's the appropriate level. But again, what we think we've heard is that these are the kind of projects you want us to work with, and these are the kinds of things you want us to advance. And so, again, very excited about moving this forward. Just as kind of a sneak peek, some of the other groups that have been visiting with us, there's two potential hotel projects. I have an application on my desk for the establishment of a TIF district for the sake of establishing a district without any project plan or any projects associated with it, but just simply setting a district, which of course we've talked about as a body in the past, and certainly from a staff level, that that might be appropriate to establish some districts throughout the city to, so that they're set, and so that when folks come in, that piece of the work is already done. So as the manager noted, even though this is a routine item tonight, I think it's worth stepping through a few things because we don't do this very often. And as I started making my comments today, I realized it might just be easier to put them on a slide, so I put them on some slides. They may or may not be helpful, but in any case, this is what you get. So we're talking specifically about Sherwood Crossing, that's the new name of the development. I think everyone knows it's at 29th and Wanamaker, the northwest corner. It's about 14 acres there on the northwest corner. That's the old Villa West, it's being rebranded as Sherwood Crossing. They have been in conversations with us, and they were specifically asking about tax increment financing, as well as a community improvement district, CID. Just really briefly, I think everyone understands this, but just to go through it very quickly, what a TIF is, it's a redevelopment tool that allows a city to work with the developer to take the incremental revenues from a project and reinvest those back into the project to offset statutory allowable expenses. So that's a mouthful, and someone today told me to explain it like I'm explaining it to my sixth-grade daughter, so. Basically, if you have a property on which you pay $100 in taxes right now, and you develop it, and you suddenly start paying $500 in taxes, the $400 increment is set aside and allowed to be used to reimburse the developer for allowable expenses. It's oversimplification, but for TIFs, we normally talk about horizontal expenses. CID, you normally talk about vertical expenses. Really oversimplified, and I hate to even say it, but that just kind of gives you a sense. TIFs, you can do parking lots and infrastructure, street sidewalks, purchase cost, some of that you can't do with CIDs and vice versa. There are two types of financing when it comes to a TIF, two main types of financing. The first is pay-as-you-go, which means the developer pays for all the expenses and then is reimbursed at a later date. The second, most common type, is where the city actually issue bonds, and the proceeds from those bonds are used to reimburse the developer, and then when the project starts going, the increment is used to pay the debt service on the bonds. Again, that's hard to explain to a sixth grader, but I mean, it's fairly straightforward, and you guys have dealt with this enough. And we have examples of both of these kinds of districts in the city of Topeka. So the process generally, not only according to state statute, but also according to our policy and procedures, is that we receive, we're really in phase one right now. And in my mind, and in most people's minds, there's two separate and distinct phases that are interrelated, but they're really distinct phases. First phase, we've gotten the applications, we've had a lot of conversations with David and Bruce and the team, and then we come to this body, and at that point, after these conversations, we've entered into an agreement where they have agreed to pay our financial advisor to do a financial analysis and any other work that might be required. We've had enough conversations that we believe that this is a viable district that will have support. Then we advance it to the body and say, we'd like you to consider a resolution to set a public hearing date. So that's where we're at tonight, February 12th, setting a public hearing date for March 19th. Then there's a public hearing, and then a TIF ordinance is considered to establish the TIFT district. Doesn't have anything to do with the plan or anything else, it's just simply establishing the boundaries of the district under which the increment will be charged. And then if the ordinance is adopted, there's essentially a 30-day window for both the county and the school district to give formal input and say, yeah, we're okay with this, or no, we don't like this. Don't very often see the no, we don't like this happen, but it can, and if that does, then phase 1A of process one is that the governing body has to adopt a resolution dissolving the district, but we don't believe that's likely in this case. So phase two is really where the project plan comes in, and that's frankly where the meat of the work for not only staff, but also the body comes in. The process has to go to the planning commission, and the planning commission has to say that the project plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city. Then again, there's another public hearing, or a resolution adopted, set a public hearing, another public hearing takes place. Then the body considers the TIF project plan typically concurrent with a development agreement that's been developed by staff, which really outlines the meat of what's going to take place. The developer agrees to perform these things, the city agrees to perform these things, we agree to incentivize at this level, and you formalize that in a document. You should have this replaced this evening, but this is a, just a snapshot of what we're looking at for the Sherwood Crossing development. The thick red line is the outline of the proposed district. So you can see what it includes, it includes some parcels that don't have development on them, and includes some, what we would certainly be able to categorize as infill development and revitalization of a shopping center that's seen better days. Just for everyone's edification, we have had a number of, not a number, we've had five TIF districts in Topeka. I'll be totally honest, the first two occurred before my time, and I'm not totally sure of the details of them. And every time I do this presentation, I mean to look and see what the details are, and I haven't, but maybe I'll do that this next time. But the Watertower Redevelopment District and the Southwest Topeka Boulevard District. East Gate District is one of the ones we've dealt with recently. In fact, in 2015, I believe, this body adopted an ordinance that dissolved the district. We had actually collected funds, and they were no longer interested in moving forward, and so the district was dissolved, and we gave the funds back to the property owners in the area and the property levying agents. Then of course, the one many of us are familiar with, and that we get a lot of pushback on, and that's the College Hill District. That, I will say, is a geo-bond district, and so unfortunately, the city is on the hook for the debt service payments of, you know, give or take $500,000 a year, even though the district itself only generates $200,000, which that is the case in point as to why we aren't really in favor of geo-bonded TIF districts anymore. And then of course, the one that I think most of this body adopted, and that's the Wheatfield Village District. Okay, so I've thrown a lot of information at you. Certainly stand for questions, but before I do, I would reemphasize that what we're asking you to do tonight is to adopt a resolution that says we'd like to set a public hearing date for March 19th. Thank you.
Okay, and Council, there is one person signed up to speak. Do we want to hear from them now before we discuss? Okay, so that is David Christie.
Deputy Mayor, appreciate it. David Christie from Kansas City, resides in Leewood, Kansas. It's a pleasure to be here and share with this governing body. I've been before, a few of you before, on other projects, have really enjoyed my opportunity, the opportunities that I've had to develop stuff in Topeka. It started in 1990 when I bought California Crossing or Highland Village from Travelers' Life Insurance, it was in foreclosure, and we developed it and put Jim Powersfeld in there and Wieland's Lumber, and I sold that about five or six years later. I bought Sutton's North Plaza, north of the river, and put Jim Powersfeld in there and renovated that and put a facelift on it. I bought the old Wieland's lumberyard on 21st Street, and can't remember who we put in there, I think it's Jim and somebody else, but my most recent project was the Academy Sports Project that we did several years ago, where we took, basically in our opinion, oblided Kmart and renovated it and put Academy in there. We tore two buildings down in the front and put those restaurant pads out front, and it worked extremely well. And the city was tremendous to work with, and we just appreciated the opportunity to do business there. In that particular instance, I think we made promises that the property taxes and the sales tax would substantially increase, and I had a chance to visit with Jeff White, your financial advisor, and he has told me that the city is very happy with the progress that's been made there. I think the property taxes went up nearly $400,000 from the investment that we made there, so we're all proud to have that behind us and thank the staff in the city the opportunity to do that. The staff has worked very hard with me, we've had half a dozen meetings to talk about what we intended to do here. We acquired the property in about 60 days. The Lindenmuth Estate was having serious financial problems, and they needed to sell, so we had no, we literally had no time, other than, we talked to a few of the council members about coming in and trying to do a CID to help us with this, the problem of, a neglect is really what I think we're dealing with here with some of the properties that that estate owned or still owns. And so we shared with them that it would be our endeavor to just use a CID and not use any other vehicle that would be necessary to renovate this property. And so we put it on a contract, we did our due diligence, and even in the throes of closing, we had some of the Lindenmuth shenanigans pulled on us, which was very sad, and I've shared, I think, some of that with some of the council members. But anyway, we're now here, we own this property, and we've done our due diligence on how can we pay for an $18 million project? And I've shared, and I probably shouldn't share this, but the rents on the property, there's a new tenant that's 6,000 feet in the small building on the end, and his rent's $7 a foot, a brand-new lease. Did I take you too long?
You have a minute.
The other lease that we're dealing with is the largest tenant in the center, which is $5 a foot, which is CVS. So the largest, I got 30-some thousand feet of 80,000 feet that I've got $6 a foot rent on. So it's very difficult for me to go spend millions of dollars renovating it, and so it brought us to needing the assistance of additional revenue because the CID, with all, the state captures all the liquor tax, so we've got Happy Basset in there, and I think the pizza place sells a little bit of beer, but generally, we've got services in there. And those are good citizens and businesses in Topeka, and we can't, you know, we've got to embrace them. We can't say, we don't like you, we'd rather have retail sales, but, so we're doing everything we can to renovate this thing under what we feel like is kindness with the tenants, because we're inheriting these tenants.
Okay.
One more minute.
Anyone wants to move? Two more minutes. All right, Councilman Cohen, second by Councilman Jensen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Two minutes.
Thank you.
Good night, yes.
So we're just excited about the opportunity to renovate this property, so please accept my apology publicly that we can't do this with CID alone, because all, because half of my tenants don't collect sales tax. And then with CVS, we can't get any CID, we can't get any sales tax on drug prescriptions, and that's a very profitable CVS. So we've been to them and talking about putting a drive-through window in for them in their existing facility, and you'll see that on our plans. But we plan to add several buildings to the development. Big O Tires has agreed to expand 2,000 feet, and they've got a tremendous business, so we're just terribly excited. We have, we've signed a 4,500-foot restaurant from Kansas City, a breakfast restaurant that you all are going to be very excited about, and they're going to take part of the space, and we're planning on putting about a 6,500-foot bar and grill in there as well, that will be, I think, a good competitor to Johnny's. So we're just really thankful for the opportunity to be here and for you all to consider this project. We'd like to ask you to support creating the district and getting more information in detail about how we can pay it back.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, discussion on setting the meeting, an informal meeting?
Should I move for discussion?
No, we can discuss. Yes, Councilmember Hiller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It sounds like I may be the least informed of the people in this room. I did not have any advance contact from staff or from the developer. I also chaired the Policy and Finance Committee that put together the TIF policy that we voted in just in May of last year, and so this is the first time out of the chute for that. And I'm going to have some comments about that, but before that, I just want to tell David Christie and Bruce Warner that I think you've done such a wonderful job at Academy Sports. And so the comments that I make have to do with our process and procedure, not anything about your quality as a developer, and one of the concerns I have is I don't want us bringing somebody down the line if a project isn't going to qualify. And I may be wrong, or you all may disagree with me, but when this came down the line, procedurally, as well as what our standards were, I was concerned about this project. Procedurally, the way I looked at it was that the way the language is written, that everything, we should be fully informed, the full application was in, the staff had reviewed all elements, and was prepared to share all of that with us, so that when we decided to move it forward at all, we understood the project and felt that it was viable. We are not at that point with this project, at least in terms of what has been given to us in a formal way and what is available for us to reference. So I have concerns about that. With the idea then, that that very first hearing, the council, that the whole project is discussed, the council is fully informed, and as our resolution says, we're asked to do a resolution today that says, whereas we find and determine it desirable to encourage the development and redevelopment of certain real property within the city, and it describes 29th and Wanamaker, and to consider the establishment of a redevelopment district at such location. That means that we know enough about the project to think that it would go down the line, and we don't, as I view that, to vote that forward starts the process, so that then, and our system sets about a 30-day window to get that public hearing so that it happens soon, so that then the public can weigh in, and if they're opposed... and cons from the general public or from the folks in the area about whether a project for any reason has merit, or as a, as a project, much less whether we should forego taxes or allow other incentives, that we're fully informed before we even put it out for that hearing. So, I'm concerned about that. That's my understanding of how we were expecting the process to go when we started. Second, what I did was go into the policy itself and look at what our requirements and our priorities were for projects. Those include, just as some examples, seek to redevelop a larger-scale project that impacts multiple land uses and brings economic to, economic activities to surrounding neighborhoods. In the discussion, that was a presumption that the neighborhoods were at risk around that and that this redevelopment and foregoing the taxes on it was going to make a difference. The districts, I'm going to skip all the words, but number three, priority on districts in the greatest, in the areas of greatest need in our city. And it suggests some specifics, highlights infill being a priority for us. Our policy says that we would prefer projects that request utilization of only incremental property taxes generated by the TIF, not any other taxes. We have this one coming in with double right off the bat. Preference for a development which brings new business. When you get into the procedures, there are procedures that the staff put in place immediately the day after we passed the ordinance on May 16th that have 20 criteria for project plan We worked for about six months, had lots of input from the development community and others, so that knowing, hoping that our economy would get going and that we would have lots of applicants, it's very appealing to give out incentives, but that we would, we would use these criteria that we carefully crafted to sift those out and not just finance everybody who came along. And as a, as a city, as we get things moving, and we have, we'll have all sorts of folks coming to us with all sorts of ideas. I learned a lot about this project that I didn't know just in the last 15 minutes, but I am very concerned, and so I came forward tonight thinking, you know, just some examples. We don't, we recently had our Sonics redo, we've had McDonald's redo, we've had some of the projects that Bill went through. They did that privately with financing. We need, and we're desperate for money, as we might have noticed, our tax revenues haven't gone up. We all know that there's a turnaround time for these projects, but I would suggest to you, as we embark on consideration of the very first one, after we pass that comprehensive policy, we've been advised that, that one way or another, our progress in that policy has attracted some folks lining up to ask for those policies that we really read what we passed and that we, that we think hard about that. I brought copies of the comments that I made, as well as the policies, if people didn't have a chance to look at them beforehand. I don't know if people want them, I can have them afterward, but I just wanted to throw all that out for this. And with that, with, again, total regard for our applicants at this time, I would vote no on setting the hearing until we're fully engaged with the project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. So what do you feel is missing from the application?
Like I said, there are 20 items that are supposed to be looked at. There's supposed to be a market study, there's supposed to be a cost and uses list, I'm doing that from memory at this point. I can read you some more of them.
Well, I don't need the whole list, I'm curious which items you think are missing.
Even the development. The issue is, when you look at the market, that's a, that's a pretty prosperous part of town. So one of the things we're supposed to look at is whether that's really needed in terms of attracting, and, you know, an investor. If we've got a project that someone has neglected and it's run down, because we're also setting the bar for how we're going to do these in the future, do we subsidize the redevelopment just because somebody let a property run down and, and somebody was able to buy it inexpensively? Or is that something that the private market should be able to bear on its own?
Okay, let me, Deputy Mayor Gerber? Did you want to say something? Or City Manager?
The first thing that I want to say is, as we look at these things, and we look at the formation of a district, there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that we would like to see White Lakes developed. I'm pretty sure that at this point, there isn't a fully vetted plan for us as to how we're going to do White Lakes and turn that into a development. One of the things that we're doing is we're establishing a district, and from that district, then, there will be a plan brought forward. Now, we know, in this case, what most of that plan looks like from staff, and Doug can talk about the things that have been submitted already and what research has already been started or completed relative to that, and I'll turn it over to him in a second. But I think one of the things we need to remember is we're setting a district, we're establishing an area that we want to see development occur. We aren't necessarily picking the plan, and sometimes, in this case, it's pretty obvious what the plan is. But I think that's real, the real purpose is we're identifying areas that we think need to be developed. And as Mr. Gerber said earlier, we have multiple projects that are coming to us and talking to us, and we're trying to look at them in the case of, will it happen or not happen based on the incentives and being included or not? The money that we'll end up receiving from the development occur, yes, it's delayed, but we're not losing out on funds that we don't already have. And so, for me, I think this is a case of where we know what the plan probably will be. We have a lot of information, and we're already working forward on that, but if we didn't know, we could determine that this area is one that we would want to see developed anyway. And so we would look at creating the district and then hope that a plan comes along for redevelopment.
Deputy Manager.
Deputy Mayor, I would just, in terms of Councilwoman Hiller's questions, and she and I had this conversation about an hour ago, so it's fresh on both of our minds, but the procedure she's talking about in our minds, and I think pretty clearly actually relate to the project plan, which is not, those things will all need to happen when we give you a project plan for consideration. We're not at that point formally. We believe that, based on the developer's history and what we've learned from him over the last couple of months, that this is a project that is going to move forward, and then in terms of the district establishment policies, that it does tick off a number of the things that, that we think are important, that you think are important by adopting the policy, including this, this really is infill development. There's no question that this meets the definition of infill development. There's no question it's going to bring new businesses. There's no question it's a 14-acre parcel, you know, $17 million project. That's the scale that we're looking for, I think. And there's also no question that the area provides neighborhood services. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Lester?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Jensen? Seconded. Okay, let's see. All those who are ready to vote? Okay. Going to all try and vote. All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no.
Hiller and Emerson voting no.
Okay, six votes were required to approve this item, so with seven voting yes, the resolution is approved. The city clerk, read the next item, please.
It is a charter ordinance introduced by City Manager Bert Trout, amending City of Topeka Charter Ordinance Number 115, Section 1, as qualified at Section 892 of the Topeka Municipal Code.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, this is an item that we had a discussion on a couple of months ago, and we're bringing it back for consideration as an action item tonight. I don't really have anything additional to add from my own viewpoint. Additional information was provided to you by TMTA regarding their request with the variety of information that was even left tonight. So at this point, I have nothing further to add, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, and counsel, we have 10, 11 people signed up. Do you want to hear them first? Okay, first up then is Trey George. Oh, followed by, request, I'm going to butcher names, Kane Easton.
Good evening, governing body. I'm here on behalf of myself personally, of Topeka Housing Authority, just to let it be known of what a phenomenal partner Topeka Metro is, not only for the Housing Authority, for our residents, as well as just for the city of Topeka. And any level of increased funding for them is only to the benefit of our city, of our residents, and I would highly encourage you to support it. The other piece that I would add on to that is that, you know, having a strong and well-rounded transit system, a public transit system in a city is another huge component of an economic development plan, something that obviously is a hot topic that, in a lot of different ways right now. So I just wanted to let you all know that we definitely appreciate your support in any type of increased funding now or in the future for Topeka Metro. Thank you all very much.
Yes, Mr. George?
Mr. George, I'm sorry, I wouldn't normally ask people questions, but since you're here and speaking on behalf of the, I never say your organization's name right.
Speaking of Housing Authority.
Speaking of Housing Authority, thank you. Would you guys, is there any funding you guys would have available for this, to help out with this?
It's something we could talk about. Right off the top, no, but, you know, it's something that we could potentially help with, not through the Housing Authority, but possibly through THA Incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, request, is that right?
Riquette.
Riquette, followed by Efren Mazas.
Hello, I'm Riquette Kane Easton. I am on the Topeka Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Also, I'm the president of the Resident Advisory Board in Topeka Housing Authority, and I enjoy running, I ride the Topeka Metro every day almost. I have, well, five kids and a husband, so we're always on the metro. We try and get everything done before the metro stop because it stops at like an early time, but it would help if it would stop a little later, so like when he gets off work or somebody gets off work, they can just go and do the stuff after work. But we love what they have done for us. We like the new shelters. The shelters help us stay warmer in the winter and cooler in the summer not to be in the sun. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you. All right, Efren Mazas, followed by Michaela Saunders.
Let me get everybody. My name is Efren Mazas, I'm a bus operator at Topeka Metro. I'm also the president of ATU Local 1360. I'm here tonight to represent the bus operators, maintenance, our union supports, TMTA's effort to obtain funding in order to continue service and to grow. Of course, as an employee, we do not want to see service cut because that would affect our livelihood, but that's not the only reason I'm here. I'm here also to speak in behalf of our customers, who would have devastating effect if service cuts are taken into effect. We serve people from all walks of life, from the elderly, who no longer drive to school, kids, with, who parents take their school kids on a bus on a daily basis. I take them every day. One of my routes, my route is going through the Housing Authority, and first of the month, I take everybody there to go pay the rent, to go, to get applications. People go pay their bills on the bus, take their laundry. It's just part of life. Without the bus service, it would affect a lot of people. I heard you want to develop out there at 29th and Wanamaker, well, they're going to have to get there to spend money, and we're probably going to be the ones taking them. Service gets cut, money's not going to be able to be spent out there. It's, I think it's hard when you don't ride the bus to know exactly what it takes to ride the bus. I'm not from Topeka, I'm from Los Angeles. Out there, transit system is heavy. I took the bus out there, without that, I won't be able to get a job. If I had a job, I'd have to travel for two hours to get to that job, and without that, I wouldn't be able to support myself when I was growing up. And I know how critical it is to have bus service here in Topeka. With that said, I've been here 16 years. During that time, I've seen a lot of change, good growth here in Topeka with the city and with the metro. I encourage you to vote yes on this because it's vital to our city. It develops people to get out and spend money, to grow in jobs, to go to school, college. We got, with 501, we got the bus passes with them, they're trying to get all those kids to go to school. If they don't have their bus pass, I let them on, I tell them, "Take care of that problem because I need you to go to school." So, thank you for letting me talk. Have a good night.
You're welcome, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, he has a question.
Mr. Mazas, thank you for coming and speaking tonight, and I, like Mr. George, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but we're being asked to raise taxes on our constituents here.
Yes.
So, a big question for me, I've met, I've met with Susan Duffy several times, a few hours on Friday this week with the Councilman Lesser, and one of the huge things driving their, their cost is labor. Would, you know, would the union be willing to do something to help there, maybe even a wage cut at some point if it comes to that?
Well, that would have to be discussed with the union members. I cannot answer that question right on the spot. I would have to be brought up with our executive board members and then discuss with all the union members that are over with us before I can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Member Pedia?
Thank you, Mr. Mazas. It's kind of a follow-up on that, and I know it's, you can't speak for the entire union.
Yes.
But you're the president of the union, right?
Yes.
Can you tell me if you feel that the administration, MTAA, has worked well with the union to look at its operational costs and make those adjustments where necessary and do cost-saving measures with the budgets that they've had?
So we brought up some issues in the past, and we've gone to the board, and they have improved on those issues that we brought to them. Now, I consider it like a family, right? The union and TMTA. We're going to have problems, but the, as a president, I try to come in the middle to, how can I say it, to compromise, because you can't have it all your way. That's going to be impossible. We have our problems, but I seen a lot of good things that have happened since the last administration, the last CEO that we had. So, good things do come out if you, if you come together.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I received an email today, I don't know if any of my colleagues did, from union representative today. Two things in the email that it did point out was the union's concern with the heavy administrative costs, as well as the extent of the bike program. Can you fill me in on what that email that was sent to me, what they were trying to convey to me on those two issues?
Well, our concern is that, concerning the bike program, I think what we talked about in the union meetings that we had is that maybe management can scale back in the winter and not have all the bikes out, because as I perceive it, we don't see anybody riding the bikes in the winter. Other cities bring in their bikes in the winter. Maybe you have seasonal workers that work with the bike program, have them come back seasonally. I have not discussed that with TMTA, that's only been at the union meetings. Concerning the staff, top heavy. And I talked to our vice. Concerning the staff top heavy, and I talked to our Vice President Doug Wright, and he said he had a meeting with Susan Duffy, the CEO, saying that they are in compliant, I think they did a study, I don't know what it is, in compliant on how many, how much staff they should have. Now, of course, we welcome to criticize on our jobs to see how much staff they have or not, whether they need it or not, so.
So, what I, just so I can make sure I reiterate what I'm hearing from you, is, is there are some concerns that the Union does have in regards to, there are things that you feel could be looked at in regards to cost savings, in regards to different ways things could be done, that possibly could help in absence of a mill levy increase. Am I hearing you correctly?
You're hearing me correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Well, thank you, Mr. Efren. I don't know if you drive over in east Topeka.
I have routes out there, yes.
I represent east Topeka.
Yes, I will see you, and I'll say hi.
And you do wave to me. I have, I have some cousins that wave to me too, so I never know who I'm waving to. But, anyway, I wanted to say, you see a lot of bike riders even in the wintertime, so, you know, I would hope that the Union would look at the studies on when they're riding, because I see a lot of bike riders, and I'm like, ooh, it's cold out there. But, but I see a lot, I see a lot from racers, because we don't have the after-hours service.
Yes.
And so, I do see that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say, thank you for letting our kids get on and taking them to school. They need to go to school.
Yes, they do.
If you would have used the example of Highland Park, you might have won Mr. Henderson's vote down there, because he's a Scott, but that's okay.
Absolutely.
But I'm sure you, if you were driving, you'd let those kids.
That is my route, so I do.
Okay, there you go. So, those are the kids, you're taking them to school.
Yes, I do take the Highland Park.
Thank you. Thank you for being that big brother. Thank you.
Councilmember Emerson?
Yeah, Mr. Mazas, I just wanted to say one last thing.
Yes.
In preparation for this, I actually went out over the past month, month and a half, and rode the bus three different times around the city.
Okay.
And each time, I mean, your operators are, your drivers are fantastic. In one case, there was a guy kind of getting up, being a little disruptive, and the bus driver calmed him down and stuff, so I do appreciate the job you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That's kind of odd to say. Could you talk briefly about the challenge to recruiting good bus drivers and keeping them, and what you guys have had to do to, you know, because once operators get certified with a CDL, there's lots of other jobs that pay more that have less stress than driving a bus. So, talk to us about the challenges of recruiting people and keeping them.
I think the challenge is, is that you have to deal with the public. So, every day is a different day. And what we have is that sometimes you've just got to let it go, because things are going to happen. When I train, I let them know that the stresses of the job is going to happen, how to deal with that stress. Sometimes disruptions do happen on the bus. We're just a phone call away from help, because we have our radios in hand, you're right there. It is a stressful job. I've been doing it now for sixteen years, coming up to seventeen this summer. I love my job. I love picking up passengers, getting where they got to go, they got to go and do examples, just go to groceries, shopping, movies, doctor's appointments, school. You know, people sometimes, at the end of the month, don't have their fare anymore. I'm low on money.
Thank you.
So.
Okay. Did you have one? Thank you. Okay, thank you for coming. All right, Michaela Saunders, followed by Andrea Ingstrom.
Hello, I'm Michaela Saunders, and I'm a resident of District Nine. Do you need my address, or? Okay. I have a, an article from City Lab, which is the urban-centric portion of Atlantic Magazine. Can I pass that around? Basically, this is one example of a growing body of research that says, whether you use it or not, if you live near vibrant transit, you are a happier human being. So, I want you to all read that and just kind of let that sink in, right? The safety net provided by an engaged transit network, like the one that Metro is building in our community, is enough to give a person with a car the peace of mind to sleep better. And that's amazing. The other piece of that article that I want you to think about is the example comes from research done by folks who live on the relatively new, at the time the study was conducted, light rail service in Minneapolis. So, Metro is a long way away from asking for the type of support that it would take to have a light rail system in our community, but that's the future of public transit. There's all kinds of research out there right now that says the car you drive right now is the last one you're ever going to buy. So, what kind of community do we want to be? That's really the question that you're faced with, with this decision. So, I know, in my house in District Nine, what Metro really wants is the equivalent of two trips for us to Classic Bean. In our house, what they want is fourteen dollars a year. I'm somebody who, because of where I work, I don't have to pay a fare, I can show my employee ID. And that's an amazing benefit, because they're an amazing partner, right? Somebody who lives in a situation where they need the bus to get their life done, to get their groceries, to get their kid to school, to make sure that they're at the doctor or the pharmacy, that person, passing that fare on to that person, isn't fair. So, that's the question that I really want you to think about. You talked tonight about the culture of yes, right? The culture of yes can't just be for the businesses that want to come in, it has to be for the people who we want to choose Topeka as the place that they live. You've set a goal of increasing the number of citizens who call Topeka home, the number of people who work in the city and choose to also live in the city. One of the things that's going to bring younger people who don't want to mess with a car, or parking, or getting a fender bender when it's icy, or in any of that mess, is strong public transit. And that's why you see people using the bus when it's freezing cold, because the bus is finished for the day. With this decision, you start to build the path forward to expanded service, to more opportunity in terms of new routes, or new exciting technology in buses. And without it, the system that we have starts to deteriorate, and we don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Here we have Andrea Ingstrom, followed by Tobias Schlingensipen.
Excellent.
There you go. Yay.
All right. Well, hey, friends, thanks for letting us speak tonight. About three years ago, three years ago on Thursday, actually, this week, I moved from the southwest side of town, from a suburb, to about a block from here. And since moving downtown, I've become much more aware of the issues that, and the challenges that people who aren't my neighbors face. In transportation, I see families waiting in the cold at bus stops. And the understanding that this is not just a luxury for our community, that this is a necessity for so many people that live here, who are my neighbors, is a real issue. But more than just for compassion for my neighbors, I want to speak to you about this as an economic development issue. So, one of our greatest challenges as a community is our workforce and our ability to recruit workforce and retain workforce. We also have a lot of people in our community who could be working, who have challenges. One of those big challenges is transportation. I run a marketing firm here in town, I have twenty-five employees, and one of the number-one reasons that a local business will call us to help with their marketing is because they have challenges with team members, with getting people to work for their business. And part of that is that they have challenges with people being able to get to their business. I just came from an event where somebody said, "I have shifts in my business where we hire entry-level people and up, and our shifts are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but the bus doesn't provide transportation, and people that want our jobs can't actually figure out how to get to their jobs." And so, from our standpoint, this is really a workforce development issue. So, having a healthy and thriving community is not just about, you know, throwing money at businesses. I echo what Michaela said, where it is about us being able to support the people who want to be viable, financially stable, contributing citizens in our community, and just need to be able to get to work. And our, our job, and I am a homeowner and very proud to say, I would support helping other people in my community to do that, because it's part of what makes us economically viable. The Plaza downtown is evidence that we are a progressive community, we have invested in an asset that is for everyone. And so, it's part of our job to make sure that things like that, that we invest in in our community, are also accessible to everyone in our community. So, as an inclusive and diverse community, we are people in motion, not just cars in motion. And it's really important that we look outside of the windows of our cars and have compassion for people who need this resource, but also that we are not just having compassion, but putting our money where our mouth is. And I'm a homeowner, and I put my money where my mouth is, and that's why I live downtown, and that's why I would ask you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tobias, followed by Robin St. James.
You know, one of the bad things about bringing up the tail end of a discussion is everybody's already said everything marvelous that needs to be said. I came here also because of my participation strengthening police and community partnerships, and I'd like to tie these two issues together. It was my plan, but I'd like to do it. We've been discussing how law enforcement can have a better relationship with different parts of our city. In other words, how we can increase communication and accountability and trust in various parts of our city. Part of creating that is dependent on factors that the police department alone, and all of us here alone, are not going to be able to accomplish. There are, there are more fundamental things that have to happen. And providing transit for all the members of this communicate, community, to get from one place of the city where people live to another place of the city where there are job opportunities is absolutely key and important. You've heard plenty about that already tonight, I don't need to reiterate that. I just want to say, I represent First Congregational Church, I'm the pastor there. We have invested money in creating a bicycle station there, we're investing money in putting in a bus bench, and a much, much better place for people to wait for a bus than to squat on the lawn in front of our church on either side of the street. And so, we're putting our money where our mouth is. This is an issue that really means something, transit, transportation justice, we could call it, it's really important. We like to say at our church, no matter who we are, or no matter who you are, where you are on life's journey, you are welcome here. We adopted it as our mission statement, even though it's very unusual as a mission statement, and our vision statement is that our entire community reflects this and that we work to help it be that way. Economic development is totally exciting in this city right now. I am completely jazzed about all the things that we are doing. But I think, since I was a child, I kept reading that sign there at Humtoon in Topeka that says, "Topeka, the Golden City." And I kept thinking to myself, what on earth does that mean? I've been thinking about that all my life. Economic development suggests that there's golden opportunity in this town. Now, if we can not just claim that there's opportunity, but prove that we can move people who are cut off from that opportunity toward getting into that opportunity, I think you will sell Topeka as a community where the next generation wants to live far better than anything else we can do in this town. I'm convinced of it, and I think you're going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Robin St. James, followed by Jennifer Church. Is there a Robin? Is there a Jennifer Church? Followed by Sarah O'Keefe.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. So, I'm Jennifer Church, I'm the Community Health Promotion Section Director, I work for the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Thanks for letting me speak. I speak more as a personal or private citizen, but also, as part of my job, I support communities to enhance their environments, so they're tobacco-free, and have more opportunities for physical activity, and better access to healthy foods. And so, today, I want you to really think about increasing the funding for Topeka Metro, Transit Authority. I personally take the bus, myself, and having multiple transportation options is really important to me. I'm from California, I grew up there, and then moved to Salt Lake City, lived there for about thirteen years. I, for over a decade, I didn't own a car, and I didn't miss a car, I didn't think I could afford a car as a student. And so, but I didn't miss it there, because the bus system was so good, there were frequent services, and it went into the evening. I could work and take the bus home and have night classes. I could walk with the continuous sidewalks, there were bike lanes, I could ride my bike. When I moved to Topeka about fourteen years ago, it was a bit of a shell shock, it was a lot more difficult to get just two and a half miles to my job, and found it was dangerous to ride my bike. The bus system was infrequent, it didn't really match with my schedule. So, the only really good option was to drive, which is my least favorite transportation option. So, I did have to make a lot of changes, including getting a second car, which was something I had never wanted to do. Currently, I live across the street from a bus stop, it's very convenient, they're always on time. In fact, sometimes I depend on them to be late when there's an ice storm, which is usually when I am taking the bus, because it's dangerous to ride my bike when the streets are icy. So, I have missed the bus before when they have been so prompt, and I haven't been as prompt. And also, I have a fifteen-year-old daughter who attends Topeka West, and I haven't been able to talk her into going, taking the number seventeen to Topeka West yet, but she assures me as soon as the weather warms up, she will be taking that bus, so that I can not be in the car for thirty minutes, driving her to and from school, and then I can ride my bike to and from work, which is, again, very important to me. So, having a frequent, well-connected transportation system that supports public transportation, biking, and walking, as we've heard, is also a sign of a very vibrant city. It's something that can attract businesses and young people. When I travel, it's what I look for. A sign of a good vacation destination is one where I don't have to rent a car. And, let's see, what was I going to say? And then also, I have found myself stranded before because of the infrequent service of the bus. So, like, if the bus only comes once an hour, and my, I get out of my job because of a meeting going late or whatever, or my boss isn't letting me get out early, I'll miss that bus, and maybe the Topeka Metro bikes are frozen, because it's too cold, so I end up having to walk home. And so, I would, it would be really great to have more frequent service, have Sunday services, go into the evening more. I was talking to the bartender tonight, at the Pennant, he said he would really love to have a beer, like a brewery run, like Fridays and Saturday nights, so just considering all of the, that many options, that could save or make the streets better, safer, even for the young people who are out in the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. We have Sarah O'Keefe, followed by Brittany Curse.
I don't know if this is allowable, but my friend Brett Martin isn't able to be here tonight, and he had slated a time to speak as well, but then had to cancel it, but he did send me something that I could read for him, so if you would allow me to speak on my behalf and then share his comment as well, would that be okay?
Is that okay?
When does my time start? Read it fast. Well, actually, I think I'd rather read his, if that's all right, over mine, because I think this is pretty meaningful. All right, he, this is Brett, this is from Brett Martin. Again, he says, "Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening," even though he's not able to be here. "As a member of this community, I have relied on the bus and bike-share services provided by Topeka Metro. Those services have made it possible for me to ride to and from work. Whether I was catching the bus or riding a Topeka Metro bike, I was able to continue my employment while recovering from an injury sustained several months ago. Even after my recovery, I've continued to use these vital services. Beyond transportation for work, these services have allowed me to shop for groceries, make necessary trips to the bank, and attend sports practices and games for my children. As you might imagine, these services were essential for me to keep my job, to care for myself and my family, and to be a supportive and present father for my children. Beyond my personal experience, I know that many of my neighbors rely on services provided by Topeka Metro. I have been a resident of District One for nearly fifteen years. Countless residents in my neighborhood and adjacent neighborhoods rely on the bus service for the same reason. I did likely for more, for many more reasons." I did likely for, for more, for many more reasons. For them to maintain their quality of life, these services and their expansion are essential. In recent months, I have noticed an uptick in the number of folks using Topeka Metro bikes on the streets of Central Topeka. The expansion of this program in my neighborhood has allowed for more flexible transportation options for individuals and families. As a member of the team of United Way of Greater Topeka, I know that the majority of clients served by our program and grant dollars face transportation barriers. For many of them, bus and bike services make the difference between employment and unemployment, health and prolonged sickness, and being present for absent, or present or absent for their children. A recent survey of Central Topeka neighborhoods noted that 24% of households did not have access to a vehicle, and nearly the same amount have a household income of less than $15,000. Bus service on all days of the week, along with access to bike share, is crucial to the health and well-being of these families. A number of our United Way partners who provide assistance for families in crisis tell us that transportation barriers are a very real issue for individuals and families. Our partners in education tell us that transportation needs often keep parents from attending parent-teacher conferences and that trips to the doctor are rationed because they don't have transportation. The proposal before you this evening would allow for those services to continue and to expand, providing more opportunities for family throughout our community, families throughout our community. But beyond these immediate needs, there is a greater vision before us. These existing services and the need to expand them beyond, or expand them based on public feedback are necessary to create vibrant and attractive places, promote a positive image, and grow a diverse economy. As you know, each of these is central to the Momentum 2020 strategy put forward by the Greater Topeka Partnership and a broad coalition of community stakeholders. Creating vibrant and attractive places require a diverse transportation plan that includes removing transportation barriers and increasing access to sidewalks, bikeways, and paved trails. Both the bus services and bike share programs provided by Topeka Metro are essential to these efforts. Promoting a positive image in our community requires that more voices are heard and that we together, we work together to make life better for everyone, maintaining existing metro services and expanding others, our investments in our people and in our community. This is one important way to make Topeka better, a better place to live, work, and play. Just going to go ahead and stop there, and I echo what he says and what everybody else has said. I think you're hearing a lot of repeated statements, and I hope you believe them, and I hope you vote wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Buchanan.
Brittany Curse. I thought that was her. Okay, I'll get her.
Okay. Sorry, I got off track there.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak to you folks today. Whenever you have a discussion, you have to hear both sides. I'm kind of representing myself as a retired person. If you keep raising my taxes, I may not be retired very long. When you go to McDonald's and Walmart, you see a lot of people my age. They're not working there because they want to, because they have to. It's my understanding that you're looking at 11.4% increase. What I don't understand is how we have a water department and a city street department that both have budgets bigger than the MTA. They don't have a CEO, a CFO, a COO, and they don't have all this legal expertise that the city has and could provide. Now, the, when the MTA started, they probably didn't have a city manager or an assistant, or deputy city manager. So my question was, before you vote on this, think outside the box. What would it do to consolidate this and put them under the auspices of the city? Cut your expenses. Then if you want to really be progressive, convert your buses, not with diesel. 41% of the buses in existence in use right now in the United States run on fuel other than diesel. 17% run on compressed natural gas. Recent studies show that if you have 100 buses in your city, they're running on natural gas. Average lifespan of a bus is 16 years. You will save $25 million in fuel costs. Think outside the box. Postpone your vote till you have a chance to look. And I would also ask you to look at this money that they're asking for. How's it being broken down? You know, 25, I was looking at my note here, that the average resident in, in the city of Topeka makes less than $25,000. That's half of the people makes less than that that were expected to raise their taxes. You raise my taxes every year. Even if you don't raise the bill levy, it's called, the city, the city appraisal goes up. That's one and a half percent. It's gone up every year for the last three years. I can remember four years ago, I didn't get a raise with Social Security. The next year I did. I was always so excited. When I got to look at my bank statement, I had $5.79. That's because they took out $5 for increase in the Medicare. Oh, by the way, then my insurance company says, "Your health insurance has gone up $5." My drug plan went up too. Wester did their number. So, you know, I, all I can say is that, you know, a lot of people my age, they're downsizing, not because they want to, they have no choice.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Brittany? I'm so sorry, I got out of order there.
Hi. Good evening. I just moved here last year, in 2018. Last year in September, I secured a job at, working at Brookwood Dillon's. But before then, I was living in Kansas City, Missouri with my parents. And about four years after my high school graduation, I had finally secured this job. Now, the reason because I secured a job only four years after my graduation is because I have social anxiety, something that I'm experiencing right now. But taking the metro bus, being on that bus, has led me to become braver every day. And it's allowing me to speak to you now. But it's also a way that I make a living. And if you guys cut it, I, I'm not going to be able to provide for myself. I moved here with my sister so she could help me get on my feet as a younger adult. But if I lose, if I lose this bus, that means I lose my job. And if I lose my job, I'm pretty sure she's going to make me move back in with my parents, which as every adult in here knows, that's a minor set, that's a major setback, moving back in with your parents. So I'm saying, cutting the bus is not something that me or pretty much any other citizen that takes the bus would want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Now, our discussion, discussion begins. Council, comments?
Is it possible to have the bus director come up here and we ask her about cutting service, because we heard that a couple times, and like to maybe get that cleared up, that, you know, which, which lines we're going to be cutting and things like that tonight?
Okay.
Good afternoon, governing body. And before I respond to that, I'd first like to introduce Jim Daniel and Scott Tunnings. They're board members. They are in the audience tonight. And I also want to recommend or recognize a couple of operators. Becky Hauer, who's an officer with the union, and Michelle Brown. She was our 2017 Kansas Rodeo queen. So we're honored. In answer to your question, Mr. Cohen, we have not, at this point, pinpointed any routes that we would reduce, but we were here two years ago and let you all know this time was coming. And then we were here last year, and I remember Mr. Ogilvy was asked by Mr. Jensen, as we did our annual report, "How much is this stuff going to cost that's on the back?" And we provided that answer, and we said we would be coming next year to ask for an increase. But at this time, that will be a board deliberation, but we have not identified routes that we would reduce. As you have heard, we know that we are affecting people's livelihoods. We're affecting their everyday life, and the last thing we want to do is to make their world worse than what it is, or, like the young lady said, waiting an hour instead of where we have frequency of 30 minutes. And those are things that we do not take lightly, and we are required by FTA, Federal Transit Administration, to have public hearings to talk about any reduction in service. And we would hold at least five hearings to that end, but at this point, we have not.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. There's been several comments about your, the executive level is very top-heavy at the metro. Could you talk about the requirements for the staff that you have and why those people are in place?
First off, I would like to thank the city council members who did a deep dive into the budget and the spreadsheets, where we've kind of walked through some of these. For example, an accounting position we were required to add. It's called segregation of duties, and we were not meeting it. Topeka Metro, in the past, has had a planning director, a party of one, and a marketing person. When I started, those positions were vacant. They were not filled. We were relying on a third party to provide our planning, and that is extremely expensive. We also, just to let you know, reached out to two organizations who do marketing to ask them, "If we asked you to do all of the following, what would it cost?" Because we know we need to market, just like anybody else, we have something to sell, and that is the service we provide. And we need to be as good as you are about sharing tweets and Twitter and social media. And trust me, I don't know what I'm talking about when I say those things. And Facebook, we have to be in their lives. We have to tell them, "Hey, we're still on, we're providing service, but there's a detour because there is a water main break." We've done that a lot, to let them know we are not going to be going down 21st Street. Valuable to do that. So those were a couple of the positions, and we have added a safety and security supervisor. Our training was, for safety, was five-minute sessions. We now do two-hour sessions every other month, and this is a best practice that was suggested four years ago by FTA, and we have adopted it. Our issues related to crashes and other things are down. We believe that it is attributable to the, to the safety training that we provide. And that officer also has signed MOAs with entities in the city. In the event of an emergency, we will be there to help evacuate your building, regardless of the time. We, this is the kind of service, as we weave into the service, city, that we provide. And basically, we've added a couple of operators to try and provide five-day-a-week shifts for them, so they're not working six days a week and coming burned out. We know that's a strong safety issue. So we've added two full-time and about five part-time operators, and I believe that's about it.
One more question, if I could. Could you talk about the impact to the ridership and individuals if you're, you're forced to raise fares, if that's your only option to create the additional revenue you need to provide the services? What would that do to the average user of the system?
So you have before you a handout, and you'll see the, the graph that shows a deep decline. That is when we raised rates 60% back in 2011. We went from $1.25 to $2. We lost a lot of ridership at that point, and it's taken us about three or four years to get some of that ridership back. And we are on the upward swing where the rest of the nation is going the other direction. We have compared ourselves to other transits. It's in there as well. While we are not competitive with them, we don't compete with Des Moines, or Wichita, or Lawrence. We do have that to, in your packet, to represent that at $2, we are the highest fare in the state of Kansas and in surrounding communities. Now, if we raise our rates and our fares, and we kind of did that when we did away with the transfers two years ago, that was kind of a, how do I say this, a hidden increase. It was also a, a good thing to go to a 24-hour pass. But I'm sure we will have a decrease in ridership. But that is something the board will have to discuss, and they will have to weigh in as to whether we do raise our, our fares. It has been since 2011, and we did it all in one day.
Other comments, discussions? Member Hiller.
Thank you. I, I'm one of the people that did the deep dive, and I really appreciate your time. I think something that I didn't really understand at first, and maybe you could explain it at least briefly, is, you know, a mill's a lot of money. It was described well by Nicola as maybe just $10 or $11 a month for, or a year, a dollar a month for a family. So that's something to know. But as this discussion has gone on, there's been kind of two sides to it. One is people worried about what would happen if services were cut. And then also discussion about what other services people have asked for and/or that you have been looking into. Could you describe at least briefly of the requests that you've asked for, how much would go into maintaining the services that you have now, and how much would, what proportion, let's say, would go into increased services, and what kinds of things you are weighing?
So presently, we set aside, like families do, money into a savings account to purchase our future fleet. We don't issue GO bonds, and a bus life is 12 years or 500,000 miles, and we reach both. And so we've been setting that money aside through depreciation. And just like you all, who are trying to establish a fleet replacement program so that you're not spending a lot of money on maintenance, on junk, it gets pretty expensive to maintain a 35-foot bus once they pass that 12-year. It, it is just like, it, it just, it begins to fall apart. And so instead of investing in something that when we take to auction, we get about $3,000 for, and you think about that, the purchase price of a diesel bus is about $570,000. The purchase price of a electric bus, which we are considering, those are the buses of the future, and those are the ones that are currently, as you look for grants, those are the ones that are being funded. And I appreciate Mr. Buchanan, I believe, his comments about the other fuels. If we would have jumped on the RA money when it was here, that's the time you make a conversion to a CNG. But that's long left us. That federal money went away, and it's hugely expensive to convert your garage and do the type of, I mean, it's multi-millions. And some of, some transits jumped on that. We, we did not. So a lot of the funding we receive, because we are not fully depreciating our assets as we should in order that we can purchase at the planned replacement time, will, a small portion will go to that. But the bulk of the money will go to, as we did our long-range transit plan to complement the Pedestrian Master Plan, the 2040 Transportation Plan, will go to adding more service on the street. We know through our long-range transit plan, there's a demand for service, more routes, and we added one, number seven, about three years ago. We didn't advertise, and all of a sudden, there's just people riding on it. They find out, they start riding before we even advertised it. We will add, we hope to add at least one, maybe two routes. We would also like to increase the service that we offer. You and I talked about later into the night. We know we get people to work. We don't get them home. There's a lot of second and third shift work out here, and we're not getting them home or we're not getting them to work early enough when our start time is 5:45. We also talked about- We also talked about a Sunday service, which has long been, when we have our public hearings, an item that the public has weighed in on. So seriously, it will help our depreciation, I would say about a third of the money. And then the rest will go to a more robust service that I believe we need to offer citizens here. We're all about getting people to work and kids to school. That's it. That's where we're focused. And it doesn't have to be us. And we're willing, as you've seen with Soto and Neto, to try the taxi, to try other things in a big 35-foot bus going down the street. And we will continue to explore all options to provide better service here in the city.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Duffy? Yes, Councilmember Ortiz?
I don't have any questions for Ms. Duffy.
Does anybody else, if she can? You can have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
What I have is, I'm, I'm kind of confused here, because staff said, what are we voting on? Because this says approval would allow the city to exclude TMTAs. So can you tell me, what exactly are we voting on?
Councilmember Ortiz, the ordinance that you have before you basically has one change in it, and that is in line 15, actually, line 14, and it's to change the word "may" to "shall." And otherwise, it's set at 4.2 mils, which is what's in the charter ordinance at present. So if you wish to go above 4.2 mils, there would need to be an amendment.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So if we approve this, then it just stays at the same level? Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion? I will say my thoughts. I had a lot of people call, too, about their taxes being raised. And it wasn't that they didn't want the bus to have what it need, needed, but it was like the gentleman said, you get $10 here, raise here, you get a $5 raise there, your groceries go up here. And the people that, you know, someone mentioned the average wage was $25,000 a year. That cuts into a lot of, a lot of money for people that don't have that much. I did think about, and I, I respect Ms. Duffy a lot, and I hope she knows that, but I did think about me as a homeowner, what I have to do when I, when I, my car needs replaced. You know, I start planning for that. I start putting money away for that. I may have to do without some things until I get those new, you know, until I get that new car. I may have to wear my old clothes for a while before I get new clothes. I also think, I think there's some things that could be done away with that won't hinder the service that we have now. And I don't really think it's fair that people are saying it's, it's our fault if, if services get cut. It's not our decision what services to cut. That is on Topeka Metro. You know, our, our decision is, do we raise the mill or not? You know, what happens there is, is on Topeka Metro. And, and I think it's, you've got to be really responsible, when you're given money, on how you spend that on expansion. You know, do people really want their taxes raised just so we can add something over here, just so you can get a new, a new dress? You know? Or do you just want to leave it the way it is, cut what's not needed? And you still, you know, we're not cutting the bus. You know, we're not, you know, I have people say, oh, they're going to cut my bus. We're not cutting the bus. Those are my thoughts. I don't know if anybody wants to add. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. So I've worked on this for quite some time and gone back and forth, because it, it's a delicate issue. You know, nobody wants to raise taxes, and everybody wants to help folks that have transportation needs. Unfortunately, those are inexplicably tied together, and there are no easy ways to handle one thing or the other. If you want to provide transportation, somebody has to pay for that. Often, it's not the folks who are using the transportation. If they could afford transportation, they would buy a car. It's as simple as that. So most of those folks, at, at least in this part of the country, if they can't afford a car, they often can't work but for public transportation. So while I'm cognizant of everyone's concerns about raising taxes, the reality is, people in Topeka are going to pay for these folks one way or the other. We're either going to have to fund homeless shelters and food banks, because people can't work, or we can invest in Topeka Metro, get these folks to work, and get them out of the situation they're in, help them build a better life. I realize that that's not, you know, cut and dry. I realize that that's not cut and dry in every situation, but the truth of the matter is, this is an expense our community has to bear. I mean, this is people helping people. So folks in our community, homeowners, renters, everybody can either bear the cost of taking care of these people in one way, or we can invest it in the transportation system and try to help them the other way. I mean, it, it just breaks down to me as simple as that. So with that, I will move to approve the ordinance, and then I will move to amend it to replace line 15 with a 5.2-mill levy for Metro.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Or is there, does he need a second?
No.
Do we have a question?
Do we have a second for this? Do I have to do that first? Second?
Okay, second.
You have a second for the amendment?
Did he just make two motions, following our flow chart here? I thought we were supposed to do the may and shall first, and then the mill levy second?
No. Mr. Robertson?
Councilmember Jensen, I think what you're trying to do is make a motion to amend the ordinance, correct? And I think you had said, I move to approve the ordinance and then to amend it, so.
Essentially, yeah. We often do just amended ordinances anyway, so.
But you do need to.
Okay. All right, that's fine. That's, that's why you guys want to do it.
Yeah. Deputy.
Well, what I was going to say is, I think you, you make a motion to approve the ordinance as it is, and then we get a second, and then you get the floor back and make a motion to amend. That's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yes.
And a motion to amend.
Well, we have to have a second for the motion.
Second at first, which would be Councilmember Padilla.
Right.
Oh, okay, excellent.
Okay.
So now there's the motion to amend it. So to replace line 15, which is 4.2 mils, I believe, we replace it with 5 and 2 tenths mils.
Okay, now, is there any other discussion?
We need a second for the amendment.
Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you. In terms of discussion, I, many people remember my comments when this first came out, because I was very, very torn about what to do and what to do in relation to our own tax situation. And I still have that concern. However, I, I understand better the separating the TMTAs and its mill levy from ours at this point. I appreciate the staff's time on that. There's another dimension that got touched on by a couple of the conferees that I, was important to me, and that we went through quite a bit. And that is, I represent District 1 in downtown, so I have a lot of people who, who need to ride the bus for income purposes, but I also have a lot of people who want to walk or take the bus to work because they choose to. And we are really working on, from an economic development point of view, to attract and keep young workers, young millennials, workers of any age, as far as that goes. We also are working on downtown, and we are in the process of doing the, the second round of, of planning for downtown parking. But what we know is that a healthy downtown, A, has transit, and B, has a parking problem. And we know that that's where we're going with adding restaurants, the hotels, and the additional spaces that we need to develop. So the transit to get to and from work, as various people either testified, or Mrs. Duffy mentioned, to be able to stay late and still get home, so that you, not everybody who can afford a car wants one. And, and those choices are part of what we need to be looking at, too, in terms of developing our city and being a place where people want to visit, people want to look at jobs, and they want to take them and stay. With the evolution of the, the conversation about all the various options for that additional money, looking at a want-to-make-a-route, looking at a crosstown 29th Street route, looking at Sunday service, be it the little vans and, and on-call service, or be it the buses, and those later times, each one of those options resonated with me. We got some additional material with them, from them on Friday night, that laid out the various options and what they could afford, depending on whether they got grants for the buses or not. It was the kind of thing I was looking for, to understand better what those options were, what, what that additional mill could buy, and also what kind of thinking they were doing about that. And I appreciate it. And after that consideration, I will support this.
Any other discussion before we vote on the amendment? Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you. Big thank you, Deputy Mayor. I've sat in this chair a long time. I've seen TMT come before us. I've seen them change hands. And I have to agree with one thing. We do get people to work, and they're stuck. And I've had several phone calls and emails, and they said, nobody wants to raise taxes. We don't. The city gets blamed for everything. I don't care if 501 raises taxes. I don't care if, if the county raises taxes. The city gets blamed for everything, even though we, we've, we have not done that. It just all gets grouped together, and then we get blamed for it. And you know, I had somebody tell me, you guys can spend nine points something on a renovation of my taxpayer money. You guys can spend money on the wear that you guys are discussing, but you can't get us to work. You can't get us home. The same tax money that's paying for all of these special projects. And so I think it's more than buying that dress. I think it's trying to get people from my side of town, you know, on the east side, that we need to continue, that we need to grow, to get them, because they're the ones going across town working, to get them home. And so I will support this. I will support this for several reasons. I'm in contact with Susan Duffy almost monthly, and she has thought outside the box in every single fashion. She's got vets riding free. She's got kids riding free, so they can go across town and they can work. She's got the elderly, the disabled, and I'm sure March is coming up. She's probably got something with spring break, families ride free. She's always thinking outside the box. So if there's ever been a board, and if there's ever been a CEO that I would trust my money with, that would be the current one. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to support this to get constituents. And another thing, you know, I, I am so excited about the East Topeka Learning Center, but they're going to have to get there. And they're going to have to get their children there. And in my district, and in District 4, we don't always have sidewalks. We got to wa, we got to walk in the streets, in the ditches, and try walking down with a stroller through, you know, from, from Topeka Housing Authorities or different, different projects with your kids, and you get splashed. It's, it's not an easy task. But you know, we got CONSA. We got jobs out there. They can't even give these jobs away, because these people cannot take the jobs because they don't have transportation. I've heard Susan say, I've heard her say she's gone to the state to try to get some money there. Well, we know how that is. Maybe we've got a new governor. Maybe she will see that. You know, so I've heard different things that she's tried. She's, she has educated the youth on how to ride. She's educated families. If you have any kind of event, she'll bring that bus out. And so with that said, I will support this, and I would ask my colleagues to really look into that. It doesn't do us no good to have jobs out in CONSA, CONSA Park, CONSA Park, I think that's not right. If, if we can't get people there to work them, and we can't get people there. We've got felons that need the jobs for whatever reason. We're, we're doing this ordinance, camping ordinance, trying to get them, you know, some type of ID to work. They can go up, up north, but they don't, they don't have transportation up there. We have to think about that. We got to keep everybody moving and everybody working. And I think our bus drivers do an excellent job, not just because they wave at me, but they do an excellent job. And I would challenge each one of my colleagues, go ride the bus at 7 o'clock in the morning. Go stand with those young kids that are on there, cussing, fussing, and bumping, and go down 21st with all the vets that are going out to VA. It's, it's packed. It's packed. Don't be like Mr. Emerson and get on one of, at one of the slow times. I'm sure that's what he did. Go ride the bus and see who's on, on the bus. And you will learn to appreciate it, and you might even become a rider. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the things that have already been said tonight. And I agree with a lot of what I've heard. I want to keep it in the mind for me, as people have said about their constituents. I have received a lot of emails, and at least 80% of those emails are supportive of this new ordinance. I'm, I'm serious. I'm surprised. And my council is pretty quiet. They usually don't get in touch with me about much of anything, but on this one topic, they have. And I want to keep it in the thought that we've talked about what we're doing for this city, and we need to talk about what we're doing for our citizens. And the thing that comes to my mind is the thing that we talked about as a body when we were, we were at the Cross Boundary Initiative in New York City. When we came back, we came back with a social value statement. And transit is social value for our community. And it brings to us, and brings to the larger community, the opportunity for hope, health, happiness, and prosperity. Those are the things that the transit can provide for people beyond the things that we talk about, about getting to the, the mall, or getting to a, the prescription, to the drugstore, grocery store, all of those things. They all bind up into those four things: hope, health, happiness, and prosperity. And that's what we need to have vital in our community, and I will support this program.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You know, this is something I struggle a lot with because of my respect for Susan Duffy and Jim Mogu, who's chairman of her board. For me, and I did a deep dive in this, I went three different times, rode it twice for an hour, the entire circuit, and twice, or excuse me, once, I went with a, a friend of mine that works in the kitchen at Washburn. And we went from his stop in North Pica down to Quincy Street, and then to Washburn. Then I had to figure out how to get back, which he was, he was actually very good at. He, he knew what to do. That's, I don't mean to damn you a fake praise, Mrs. Duffy, but my, my problem on this comes down to property tax. I, I was struck tonight when we saw the top 10 properties that are being built in Topeka, and I noticed seven of the 10 will be tax-exempt. We have a tax-exempt problem here in Topeka, and it's primarily because we're a capital city. And we have all these organizations, these nonprofits, which we love for the jobs, but they, they concentrate the, the property tax on relatively few of us who pay it. And that's, that's just the truth. I would love to see if we could work out some sort of pilot funding from the state. You know, we spend a lot of money around that capital area and providing services, which, again, I know there's jobs there, but there's jobs in all these buildings that pay taxes as well. I saw recently St. Francis became a tax-paying entity, and now that they're paying tax, they're able to also make a profit. So it, it can be done. So my issue is not with the management of the MTA. My issue is with raising taxes on an already overburdened constituency. And I had kind of the opposite of Mr. Padilla, in that I did get a lot of feedback on this, but it was, it was very slanted the other direction. People just feel that, that they are tapped out, frankly, out, out in my district at least. So luckily, I, I will not be in favor of this, but it's not for a lack of admiration for Mrs. Duffy and her staff. for Mrs. Duffy and her staff.
Any other discussion before we vote on the amendment? Yes, Councilmember Mays.
So I've been battling myself in my head over this for a while now. I also have received a number of constituent communications. I actually sent out a survey to about 800 people in my district, which I've done before, and you guys have heard the results. And out of that, about... It came back about 61% said that they do not support this increase. Now, having said that, I've, you know, I've always felt that as an elected official, there's two things you need to be mindful of. One is to vote your district, and number two is vote your conscience. And my district is telling me to vote no, and my conscience says to vote yes. I've got, you know, a number of the folks that came up tonight I consider friends and I have a lot of respect for. And... But at the end of the day, I think that the folks that elected me are the ones that said to vote no. But having said that, I'll say that I feel like what we have a duty as elected officials to find compromise at times. And while I feel like there's a lot of people that say that things have to be yes or no, I would think that there should be some room for a middle ground. I'd maybe like to see this decrease to a lower amount. And if this motion fails, which I'll make a motion to reconsider with a different amount, but I'll be voting no on this particular amendment.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, then, let's make sure what we're voting on. We're voting on the amendment to accept the ordinance as written except for changing the 4.2 to 5.2, correct? And it needs six votes to pass. Six affirmative votes. Okay, so we ready to vote? So those for the amendment vote yes, those against the amendment vote no.
Okay, we have... Motion fails. We have five no and four yes. We have Deputy Mayor Clear, Emerson, Mays, Cohen, unless they're all voting no.
Okay, so it is back on the table. And Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'd like, having voted on the prevailing side of the previous motion, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. And I don't... Do we have to do that motion first before I can amend?
Yes. Yes.
Point of order.
Do you want to amend the amount, Councilmember Mays? Is that correct?
Wouldn't that have to be a separate motion?
Yes. You need six to reconsider.
But if it fails, you wouldn't need to make a motion to reconsider. You'd simply make a new amendment. You could just make an amendment or motion.
Because the original motion hasn't...
Oh, so we were on an amendment. Okay, well, I would make a motion to amend the ordinance, striking the number 4.2 and changing it to 4.7.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Jensen seconds it. Can someone tell me what... How much that is to... What is it, the house of $100,000? Half a mil, so it'd be $5 a year? For a $100,000 house. Right? So if you have a $50,000 house, it's going to be $2.50.
A year.
A year. Yes, Councilmember Hiller?
Just for everybody to consider when they're voting, Deputy Mayor, if I could... This is a really funny setup in that it takes six votes to get an amendment done, but once that motion is amended, it will take seven to pass the amended motion.
Because it's a charter ordinance.
So it's something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Emerson?
Madam Mayor, thank you. First of all, Mr. Mays, I appreciate you offering this motion. I guess my question is, Councilmember Lesser and I met with Susan and, excuse me, Mrs. Duffy and Mr. Ogil on Friday for several hours, trying to figure out if there was a way to do something. And I think at the end of the day, one of the things that we came up with was, you know, everybody needs to have some skin in the game. If we're asking constituents to raise the mill levy, maybe there's a slight raise in the fair, maybe there's, you know, maybe there's some shifting of administrative jobs within the... So I really like what you're doing, but I don't know if there would be time to table this and see if there's a way that, you know, that could be met. Because again, if other people... If other entities in this had skin in the game, I'd be more likely to consider, you know, an interim solution, I guess.
Okay, Councilmember Lesser?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That would be my only concern. I echo exactly what Councilwoman Emerson said. We met for a number of hours with Susan, who I do have the utmost respect for. And during the course of that, I did bring up the conversation about the possibility of a combination of a reduced mill, taking a look at how the bike program plays in expense-wise in regards to our main mission of getting people to work every day, as well as a combination of taking a look at some of the administrative costs in regards to that structure and the possible outsourcing of some of those things, as well as a small portion of a rate increase to have everyone have a little bit of skin in the game. And the reason I say this was the response that I did receive was, if they do not get this at this point in time, they would be back next year to ask again. So under those circumstances, I echo again Mr. Emerson's. I would be happy to try to work on looking at something that everybody has a role, but under the context of the meeting that we had on Friday, I believe, I would not be able to support that. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So I think that's an excellent idea, gentlemen. And I think what we're proposing is actually exactly what you all are proposing. This ordinance doesn't actually take effect until 2020. So in essence, we're making the first move, but by only giving them half a mil, we're obligating them to make some changes on their side and to try and meet us in the middle here. So you guys are absolutely correct. And if we want them to put some skin in the game, we're obligating them to do so in order to meet their stated goals. If they don't, then they're not going to be able to achieve those, and we have the option to take this back. So I see absolutely no reason why they can't step up at the plate and make some changes, as you guys are suggesting they could. And we could still pass this this evening on a good faith effort, saying, "You know what? We'll give you the time and credit to do so, but you have to do it." So I absolutely think that they could, and if they don't, then when it comes up for vote next time, take it away.
Councilmember Hiller?
Another procedural comment. There have been some emails flying back and forth today about just exactly how this would work. City manager or city attorney might want to clarify. It's my understanding that if an amendment tonight to raise their mill levy level does not pass, but we do go ahead and just pass the change in language that helps with the tackling, that any time through the course of our budget process, we could go back to look at raising their mill levy. So if there was a reason then to hold out for some more fine tuning of what they had in mind, we could still do that yet between now and really middle of August, right?
City manager?
Yeah, based on the information, you know, what you'd be approving would be that it would change the may to shall and the 4.2, which would be aggressed in the affirmative. But the amendments would have been what would have failed. So therefore, the particular issue that we're addressing would be done and would not have failed. Instead of having, should it fail, it would be a requirement to wait six months to have reconsideration of the item that failed, based on your rules. So you would be able to have the primary issue would just simply be the changing of the one word, and then you would bring it back at a later date if you desired to, if we had an interest in doing so.
Okay, but now we have amendment on the table. So we need to vote on that, unless there's any other discussion. And it takes six votes to pass. Yes?
Can I ask amendment, do we say?
Yes. Do you have that?
The motion was to amend the 4.2 mils to 4.7.
So half a mil.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Ortiz? Thank you. I'm going to say this, and then I'm not going to say anymore, but I think it is elected officials. It's our duty to represent the whole city and not just our district. Because, you know, when I sit up here and I vote, it hurts the whole city. I'm only one vote, and it hurts the whole city. And it kind of saddens my heart when I hear, "Well, I took a survey, and I think those people..." And I'm not trying to bash nobody. This might... This vote might kill me out of this seat. I don't care, but it's that important to me because I think as elected officials, it's our duty to look across the whole city, not just who needs a ride, but the most vulnerable. And this really saddens me at a half a mil. These people have not asked in over a decade. They have not asked, and they've been denied. And everything goes up. When our taxes all go in that black hole, it's not separated by the rich, the poor. It's just all there. We all pay into it. And it just really saddens. So that's what I look at, is that we represent the whole city, council representatives of the city. And so I hope before you cast your vote, we will think about that because it just really troubles me. Thank you.
Anything else before we vote? Okay. We are voting on the ordinance as submitted or offered to us, changing the 4.2 to the 4.7. Take six votes. So if you're for that...
Well, it's six for the amendment.
Right.
Seven for the amendment.
Okay, so if you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Okay, the motion fails. We have five yes, four no. No is Deputy Mayor Clear, Emerson, Cohen, and Lesser.
Okay, so at this point, we can still talk about it in six months. We're at budget time? Oh, I'm sorry. We're still on the resolution. The whole ordinance. Okay, so now we have the ordinance as submitted... As submitted with the 4.2.
Mrs. Robertson, there is also a need, if later on they wanted the ability to do something without invoking our property tax cap, there is also a need to change a word in here that would allow that.
That's in the proposed ordinance as written.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you.
Okay, so yes is... Yes. So yes, you are supporting what was proposed to us. No means you do not, and it takes seven to pass. Could you read what we're voting on?
Yes. The ordinance as amended are presented to you guys from staff for amendment, and it's a 4.2 mils, and there's one word changed from may to shall.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes. We have eight yes and one no. Councilmember Ortiz voted no.
Okay, so this was approved, and let's move on. Do we want to take a break? Okay. Ten minute break? Okay, we'll return at 8:46. I don't do math. Okay.
Yeah, math would be 8:30.
8:36.